Okay, all right, welcome to the February 18th Planning Board meeting. Today on the agenda, we are reviewing two sets of minutes. We are going to discuss the final regulations issued by the Executive Office of Housing and Global Communities. And we have also discussion of, discussion on master plan update. And without further ado, let's start. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from January 7? Oh, and with us today, in case you hadn't noticed, is Donna, Donna Brewer. So if you have any questions, you can fire away.
Great.
Okay.
Hi, Donna.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thanks for coming, Donna. All right, so.
No problem.
So minutes from January 7th, have you all had a chance to look at those? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from February 4th. Do I have a?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're going to go on to, so just a quick recap, at the last meeting, we had voted to, we had some questions that we reviewed, and one of the questions was, there were, there were some follow-up. And one of the questions had ADUs on condo parcels, and the board was unanimous in voting for one condo, one ADU per parcel. And then the question came up, is it allowed to have, to say zero ADUs on a parcel? So it was left that I would check with Donna, and Donna says, yes, she thinks that is possible, and that, well, I'll let you speak for yourself, Donna.
Well, not that there can't, you have to allow an ADU as of right, one.
On a condo, on a condo parcel?
Yeah, no, condoized, so we believe that you, this is an unsettled question, unanswered as of now, but yes, we believe that there should be a way to write the bylaws so that the ADU and the primary residence, the principal dwelling are, remain in common ownership.
Okay, so, but for condo properties, the board had voted at the last meeting to say one ADU per parcel, and then the question came up was whether there could just be, we could say, no ADUs per condo parcel.
So we don't think you can do that. We think that, looking at, at the way the, the property is defined, and let me just call it up here, I've got it here. Just want to see.
So, I mean, the question that I posed to the board was, to the board members who supported zero ADUs on a condo parcels, was that, would that be allowed? Is that an open question yet?
So, the way it's defined is, the principal dwelling is defined as a structure on the lot it is situated on, conforming to zoning, gets at least one ADU, one protected ADU. So if the structure is a building that has two or three condo units in it, that structure only gets one ADU. So among those two or three owners, who gets the one ADU is the question. But because the definition is tied to the principal dwelling being a structure on a lot, then it seems that that structure gets one protected ADU as of right.
Okay, so we're.
Can I break in?
Yeah, definitely.
So let's take Orinok, for instance, which is a condo community of some sort. I don't know if you're familiar with it.
I'm not, but you can.
It has.
So Donna, it's on, as you're heading north on Prospect Hill Road.
Mm-hmm.
It's an older structure on the left, it was formerly a camp, and, I mean, before that, it was, you know, a dwelling, but.
It's one building, so.
It's one building, and then there's.
And then there's, there's maybe 15 other structures behind it that are all part of the condo community, the people who are not lucky enough to live in the, in the grand building. So are we saying that each one of those separate structures is entitled to have an ADU? Each one of those separate structures may contain two or three condos that are part of the whole condo community.
Right. So I would say not, I would say that that, it's all one lot, and each lot only gets one protected ADU.
So in that case, we're not talking about the structure, we're talking about the lot.
That's, that's how I'm going to interpret principal dwelling. I don't think, and as I say, we've got a question into the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office to try to, to, to answer this question, but under the regs that just came out, the, although it talks about a structure, it also says containing at least one dwelling unit. So I view that as saying that the lot may have more than one structure, but they are, they are entitled as a collective to only one protected ADU.
Okay, so that is what the board voted on unanimously at the last meeting, and, so we'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, let's, let's try to, as you, as you guys know, typically, ownership, the structure of ownership is not something reached by zoning, but we have raised with the Attorney General's Office, this serious concern that not only Stockbridge has, but lots of other communities have, about ending up with lots that now all of a sudden have two, three, or four ADUs on them because they keep condoizing. And when you're talking about, let's take a typical single-family home that has a lot of two acres, then if you keep condoizing it, and you say that each of them gets an accessory dwelling unit, then you've got real problems for communities.
I didn't know if there was any restriction around the fact that condo communities are not owned by a person, generally. They're owned by, they're owned by the association. And there may be many other forms of this, but I don't know if that comes into play at all.
Yeah, that's actually not true. And people who own condos have deeds to their unit, they own their unit.
But that's their unit, they don't own the property.
Right, that's common space.
If it's common space, right, but the dwelling is owned by a person, not an associate, not the, not the association.
Right, so in that case, if they own the footprint of the, of the condo that they're in, then there's no room for them to build an ADU.
Well, the ADU does not have to be a separate structure. In fact, it specifically can be part of the principal dwelling, it just needs to have a separate entry. So you could put an ADU in a building without expanding the footprint.
Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah. And that would be considered your lot? The, your actual footprint of the building could be considered the lot with that building on it?
Well, we're trying to say no. We're trying to say in that case, that no, the lot includes the entire lot that the condo association on.
Right, which would make more sense.
And there are a lot of laws in condo associations that say you can't rent out that way, you know? So it's already built in to quite a few, anyway.
Okay, all right, so.
Nancy, I think you had a question.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so would they need a special permit? Would a condo association need a special permit to have an ADU on their property? Or can they do that by right?
No, so what we're going to say is, we're going to say, no, the condo structure will have, let's say, three units again, in, in their building. We're saying as of right, that, that association, that lot gets one protected use ADU as of right. And what I've heard you say is, you don't want any extra ADUs to be permitted by special permit. So that's all that they get, is regardless of the number of units on the lot, they get one ADU as of right.
So with condos now, I'm sorry, from what I've seen, you go through up one of these places, and there's a condo here and a condo there, and how much land, does it have to have so much land around it to make a building permit to put an ADU in, if they do it, a separate building?
Yeah, I mean, we're.
Within their, within their condo, they could do it, but a separate, a separate ADU outside their building?
So they'd still have to meet all sorts of your setback requirements, and Title V, and, and all the other environmental regulations, they still have to meet all of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so we had consensus on those two questions, and it was the first question that we did not, there were some outstanding questions on, and that had to do with, does the board feel that ADUs should or should not be used as short-term rentals? So that was the one that was outstanding, we heard from some of the board members, and then I believe Liz, not quite sure, Nancy and Wayne, maybe you were unsure, so do you have questions for Donna that will, will help you decide?
Well, I think the question was, if we say that you're not allowed to have a short-term rental in your ADU, does that blanket everybody? And is anything with an existing short-term rental, does that eliminate their ability to still have that, if you chose to put that into the bylaw?
So, at the moment, our licensing structure for short-term rentals is a general bylaw. You can amend general bylaws, and people do not have grandfathered rights protected from a change in a general bylaw. You do under a zoning bylaw. So if somebody has an existing ADU, then they are not going to be permitted to continue it as a short-term rental if we make this change.
Okay, thank you. And I would prevent anybody be done with.
The board.
Done with it, completely.
Do we have a sense of how prevalent?
We asked that, too. We asked that, too, last week, and we didn't have good information on how many people actually do that.
Yeah.
So is it a problem, or is it not an issue at all? That's.
Right, and it's so hard to figure out.
Of the few people that I know who do short-term rentals, it's basically their house that they're short-term renting, or a portion of their house, but they don't meet the ADU requirement of a separate entrance and all that stuff. They're, they're renting out their bedroom for a weekend or something, or a bedroom, you know? So I don't, I'm, I'm assuming that since it's not an ADU by definition, they can still short-term, do that short-term rental.
Yes, that's right.
And they could short-term rental their, their house.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this would, this basically prevents both LLCs and private entities from turning their tool shed into an ADU and short-term rental. And I think that's kind of what we're trying to prevent, but maybe not, maybe, maybe other people have a different view of it.
Well, is there an issue? That's, that's where I start.
Yeah.
Do we have a problem? Is that something that we're dealing with now, or have a strong feeling that it's going to happen? I mean.
Does anybody, does anybody here, just as a, for instance?
My neighbors are, you know, have a cottage, and, you know, it's got its own entrance, and they use it for rentals, you know, short or long-term, you know, all the time. I mean, are we getting in the way of something like that? I mean, it's.
We would be.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, we would be.
But remember the definition of an accessory dwelling unit. So if that doesn't meet the definition of a, of an accessory dwelling unit under the statute and the regs, then it's not going to be affected by a prohibition, so long as you're tying it to the defined term of an ADU.
So you're saying if it's over 900 square feet, it's not considered an ADU?
Correct.
Okay.
Under this statute, right.
Okay. So that would be up to the building inspector, right? When they get a building permit to put an ADU in their house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you designate what you want it to be, and keep it that?
Whether a protected ADU or one of the ones allowed currently under the use, use table, that is if you keep it. Because, you know, we do have the, under 4.4 of the use table right now, that you can convert an accessory structure existing before January 1, 1990, into one or more dwelling units, provided that the minimum livable area is 300 square feet for one unit, and averages a minimum of 500 square feet for two or more units. So one of the decisions you'll have to make is whether you want to keep this option for this form of, of accessory dwelling unit that's not a protected use ADU under the statute and the regs. It's, it's a, would just be a local provision for an ADU.
So if current regulations allow you to build an accessory structure, I may be missing something here, why would anybody make it less than 900 square feet?
The current one doesn't allow for a construction of it, it's conversion of an accessory structure.
And it's, it's a, has to be pre-1990.
So it's, it's only, only structures that are, that are, that were built before 1990?
Correct, under this local version of an ADU.
Okay, so going forward with the new ADU law, anyone who wants to build a separate structure on their parcel, has to do it as an ADU?
Um, I'd have to look over the entire bylaw again to see if there's another way you could do it. But if you want to do it as of right, then yes, you're going to have to meet the definition of an ADU under the statute and the regs, which is 900 square feet or half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. So is there, you know?
Thank you.
So otherwise, you should just go to the building inspector and have an addition put on your house. Now.
I think the intent is to address scale, so that you're not getting something that's completely inconsistent with surrounding area.
Which is in there because of that size regulation?
The 900, or, yeah.
And then, well, so who would be eligible for short-term rentals at that point, if you did not allow it in your ADUs? What then is?
Yeah, you talked about some of them, you know, somebody who wants to rent out the entire house, or rents out a bedroom, or something, some other portion of a principal dwelling that doesn't fit the definition of a statutory protected use ADU.
Or, as we spoke about last meeting, I think, if the, if the person who is living in the house moves into the ADU, they can still short-term their house.
Oh, right.
Right.
Which.
So, which is, you know, I think there was a property in Williams Town in the paper that was covered where that's exactly what they did. They wanted to scale down, so they just, you know, moved into the ADU, and they short-term rental the house.
Probably paid.
That worked for that particular couple, but just, I'm, I have a problem limiting what people can do with that unit that they have, and I go back to the question, do we have a problem with it? We, we already can, I mean, the, the one thing that kind of made everybody nervous was, well, corporations are going to come, well, we already have that in place, I didn't realize that, but corporation can only own two. So that is kind of off the table. It's not like a company can come in and start buying everything up, and do what they want to do with short-term rentals. Do we have an issue with this particular item?
Well.
And, and I don't want to just put something in place because, I know, I don't, I don't want to limit people in that area. If we have good reason to, I'd like to talk about that, but right now, I, I mean, I don't hear that.
Well, again, what's, what is the intent of the Massachusetts statewide-directed ADU? Is it for short-term rentals?
No, it's to create more housing, because we are, we have a shortage of affordable, and we have a shortage of housing, we just, because we have more that are second homes at this point than we ever did, and we have less in terms of inventory for, for locals.
So housing compared to rental?
Short.
I mean, owner. Rentals, rentals, this is oriented towards rentals.
It's all rentals.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all rentals, so. It says to create housing for people who, I mean, there are so many people who can't find housing.
It's long-term rentals as opposed to short-term rentals.
Right, yes, yes.
It's not a matter of ownership.
Yeah. So, you know. So I guess, yeah, I think that's the intent, and with that, I would say it's sort of straightforward in terms of, you know, just think about, are you interested in addressing that intent of the by, of the law, which is to, you know, incent, make it an incentive for ADUs to be used as rentals? Or, you know, are you willing to open it up to outside investors?
I don't think this, I don't think that this, I mean, if we're, if we're looking, what we're trying to do here, I think, is, is to, to tailor our regulations to fit with this latest state of Massachusetts directive on ADUs. This doesn't, I don't see this as choking off short-term rentals. You can still go and buy, you know, a little cottage or something, or a house, or whatever, and short-term rent it. You just can't multiply that on a, on a particular piece of property.
And you can't have an ADU in a short-term rental, correct?
No, that's a new one I'm thinking.
You have an ADU in a short-term rental.
It would eliminate the possibility. I suppose, I, this is, I didn't think of, I suppose if you had a house that was, you know, big enough, and you weren't living there, you were short-term renting it, that's happening all over Stockbridge, I think, whether it's private people, or, pardon me. Who do I know in Denver, Colorado? I think, so the, so the property owner isn't even living there, kind of thing, and they're, they're, they're short-term renting their house, their house is big enough, they, they create an ADU in its separate entry, whatever, proper square foot, all that kind of thing. I guess that could be an ADU. I don't, I don't, I'm just theoretically looking at it that way, I don't see a.
They could make more money that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, but what it's doing, once again, is it's creating.
Another living space.
A living space for somebody long-term.
Yes.
So that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
I would think.
But from what I read, the owner doesn't have to live in the house.
Exactly.
We had that discussion at one point about the owner having to live on the property to have an ADU. That's, the new law says they don't.
Right.
Right.
Right. So you, like I said, you have, you have a number of people in town who don't live here, or whether they're LLCs, or whether they're private landowners, or whatever, they have a house that they've been short-term renting, and it's big enough, and they're, so they want to create an ADU in it. And I guess they would have the right to do that. And it would probably be a good thing.
Okay, so are we, we ready to go ahead and make a decision on this question of whether ADUs cannot be used as short-term rentals? Let me do a straw poll, so I can find out where we're at. Gary, where are you on it?
Um, no.
Cannot be used. Eric?
The same.
I'm also a no. Liz?
No.
No? Nancy? No?
What is our, some discussion?
Can I just?
What is our, some discussion before my vote? What are we actually, if we're taking a vote, what is this vote going to go towards? Are we, are we saying now that, okay, we're, whatever we are, is this a recommendation to select board? Is this a recommendation to?
This is so that Donna, so that Donna's firm can go ahead and start working on the bylaws, so that we can update our zoning bylaws, and so that we have the wording, we'd have a public hearing, and we'd go to the select board, and then I think it goes back to the planning board, and, you know, for public input, and we make recommendations, and then depending on those public hearings, it goes to the town meeting for a vote. Okay, but I, I do recommend that we go ahead and get going on this, so that we have something ready for town meeting this year.
So pose the question again for me.
The question is, do you favor ADUs being used as short-term rentals or not? Being used as short-term rentals? While you think about it, Carl?
I, I, I don't see it, I don't see a problem. I'm, I'm okay with it, yeah.
You're okay with it? Okay. So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 2, 2 nays. Okay, so.
We go to get.
I don't have it, yeah.
Wayne hasn't voted yet.
Does it?
No, I know, I haven't made a motion, I'm just doing a straw poll.
So we vote, we do not want them used as, right.
Right.
I'm just making sure what I voted on.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion that the, that we not use accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are you accepting any public comment before you vote?
Um, sure, but could you please be concise and state your name?
My name is Patrick White, I'll try to be as concise as I can be, but you know me, so that may be a problem. Already 10 words. I, I strongly would suggest that you limit a property of one short-term rental. By, by suggesting that ADUs cannot be used as a short-term rental, you are basically benefiting individuals and couples over families. Because if a family can't move into the ADU and rent out the main house, then they're not able to have a short-term rental, whereas if I'm single, like me, and I had an ADU, I could move into the ADU and rent my house out. So you're basically creating, in my opinion, sort of an ageist rule. If you, if you, I, I completely support limiting each property to one rental, one short-term rental per property. I don't, I think it's problematic to suggest which of the two they can run out, because the needs of the owners may be different depending upon whether they are a couple or a family.
I don't think that came up in the question. He's saying that there's, you know, there's a situation where it discriminates against a family, so. You know, there's a situation where it discriminates against a family, so.
But if, if there's one ADU, still the ADU, we're not talking about the rest of the house. We're talking about the ADU itself, correct?
Correct, but he's saying that, that, that hardship would be that a family may not be able to fit into the ADU.
So they can out their house.
Do the swap. And, and then rent the other pe- piece instead of the smaller ADU.
So why would you move from your home if you're too big to fit in?
Because we would limit, we would limit that by this bylaw. We would be limiting. What you can do there. So you would either have to move into the ADU and you and your family. So that you would then be able to short term rent your house. But if you don't fit into the ADU. You, you're, you're being eliminated from that possibility.
Unless you have an outside ADU.
Unless you have a bigger.
I think he, I think he's saying it's not big enough.
It's only 900 square feet.
Yeah.
It's hard to, I just spent a week in an 800 square foot thing with four of us and I was ready to die.
I don't know how anybody thinks that they could live in a week.
Hey, I just want to have one other point.
Excuse me, could you please?
I just make one other point real quick.
Could you please wait and let the board discuss this? I'll call on you when I'm ready. I noted that you'd like to speak. Please wait. One thing. I would just say is that I don't. I lost my train of thought. Go ahead.
I think that the larger, the larger point in planning here. Has to do with the character of the town. And I think my personal opinion, having seen it happen in my lifetime at the Curtis Hotel Lennox. Is that the single biggest threat to this town is the closure of the Red Lion Inn. And I think that we can debate the benefits of short term rentals and weighing the rights of individual property owners all we like. But the more rentals you put in this town, the harder it is going to be in the long term for the Red Lion Inn to stay a going concern. And I think that, that to Kate's point, we should take a really hard look at short term rentals in the long term. And if you're not willing, if you're not willing to limit them overall in this town, then I think that the fair thing to do would be to have some flexibility on which one they could rent. But. You know, I, I, I hope somebody's talking to Sarah, Sarah and the other managers of the Red Lion Inn.
Patrick, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, could you please stick to the question of ADUs and not? Start dragging in. Um, other issues that are.
It's the hardest short term rentals, Kate.
This has, we're talking about ADUs and their uses and I'd like you to stay on point here, please.
It's all part of it.
I thought it was part of it.
It's all part of it. I, I don't have a problem with them explaining why in the broader scope of the idea of. And I, I, I don't need to change the subject here, but what's the enforcement for any of this? All knows.
Yeah, that's, that's all, right. That's a whole nother, yeah. So.
But the, 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 the question in front of us, the way I'm looking, short term rentals. Are happening. They're going to continue to happen. What we're looking at right now is the Massachusetts mandate for ADUs. And the Massachusetts mandate for ADUs. Was not to provide more short term rentals.
Right.
If we just put our, if we just look at what we're trying to make a decision on. Instead of everything else. I think we can come to some consensus, maybe not. Um, all those other things can be discussed is how, how we regulate short term rentals. But they shouldn't be attached to ADUs if that was not the state of Massachusetts mandate for ADUs.
If you agree with the mandate, and that's what we've had problems with, with the earlier discussion last week was what? Is Massachusetts saying, yes, you will do? And what can we do to prevent some of that because we're not in agreement with much of it? So this is just the facet of it. And if you're saying that, okay, then we're absolutely on board with the state's idea here, that's fine. Or if there's questions about limiting people's ability to do. Things with their property, that's part of that decision. I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, there's so much of that thing that just seems like it's jammed.
Oh.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand. I just think that this is, I mean, the head of. Um, the livable office of housing and livable communities. You know, has said that. This, I mean, that's, you know, his opinion that this would be, this would be something that would make sense to do. Is to, if your goal is to um, provide this type of housing. Um, I don't think they were, you know, I don't. By proposing it as they are, they're looking at a certain market. And I don't think that. You're not going to get a perfect, a one size fits all. So when I look at this, I see that they were looking at. Um, a certain market, maybe young couples or single people who might be in the area short term. You know, maybe um, young nurse, a young nurse or young staff at the hospital. I mean, who are the largest employers in Berkshire County? Um, it's Berkshire Health Systems, it's Williams College, General Dynamics. So as I see it, the intent of this. Is, is potentially, is, is not necessarily the same as. Um, you know, some of the other ideas that we've had, we've heard floated here today.
But does it, does it? Come out in the wash? I mean, is a, is a short term rental? That much more economically? Advantageous than having somebody in there for the long term? I mean, you have the option. Right, but you don't have the option the other way. So if there's folks that want a long term rent, you don't have to short term rent. You can long term rent to them.
That's, that's true, but you make a lot more money short term renting. And so they, that kind of. You might want to just short term rent in the summer and you'll make more than you're going to make all year long.
Even in the 900 square foot or less? I mean, I, I see the short term with a house. I see that's absolutely. But with a 900 square foot or less, you just said.
Well, I, actually, I, I rented a place on the Cape for a ridiculous amount of money. It was tiny. And it's short term. It will never be long.
Ask it, what's it?
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, Peter Wrensky. Um, I think we need to define.
Peter, do you mind just coming up to the podium so folks can see you? Thank you.
Um. I think we need to really define what, what in, what in Stockbridge term is an ADU to begin with? Because I don't know what the definition of short term rental is. Is it a week? Is it a month? Is it the summer? Because. I don't think. The goal of the ADUs for what it's being promoted for from the state level. Is to be vacation rentals. Um. I think they're meant for, and that's why I was kind of sitting there wondering, is there a limit? You know, like if somebody does an ADU, rents an ADU, is it for six months? Is it for a year? I doubt it's going to be, I would hope that it wouldn't be like just for a week or, you know, like as a rental, because we have rentals here and we have rentals in every vacation or. You know, small town. Um, so I think if we define, I don't even know if it's in the, the language from the state or, or here. Is there a, a, a time limit or does time come into play what short term? Cause I don't know what short term rental means.
There is, right?
Yeah, 31 days.
Thirty one days.
Thirty days.
Yeah. So, I mean, by.
So.
So in, you know, in saying that, as I understand it, someone correct me if I'm wrong here. If you. If you make the recommendation that short, that ADUs would not be used as short term rentals. Then you're, you're going to have less of a transient type of scenario. And the reason um, I land on that. Um, is my recommendation is I think. As I know it, I know Stockbridge, I, I think that's what residents would prefer. But, you know, that's just.
I would have a tendency to agree with you.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering how it fit into the short term vacation. You know, the, the people that, you know, with the companies that you talked about, you know, is it? Six month commitment, you know, where then it kind of averages out and it. Would monitor, you know, would manage the price a lot better and stuff like that. I, I was just curious.
The question though with the commitment. You know, do they have to sign a commitment when you rent an ADU?
That's up to the, uh, Donna. I would think that's a, you know, that's a rental agreement and that's up to the owner of the ADU.
Oh, I got you. That makes sense.
Yeah, we're not going to control that by zoning.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I mean, we do, we are, it sounds like in the regulations, we are required to track it. And provide updates to the um, executive office of housing and um, livable communities. So that's on the town. But yeah, as far as the rental agreement, that's, that's the owner. So.
Yeah, what we track is the permits, the ADU permits that are approved and denied and issued a certificate of occupancy.
And Gary had a question on, um, you know, the role of the building inspector. Even though it's a by right, they would still have to demonstrate that what they're doing meets the requirements, right?
Sure, yep.
Yep, okay.
And I go back to Carl's. Who enforces?
Like any bylaw we have.
Yeah, it's the same with anything.
So.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea about who's going to monitor that?
Just like with the rest of our, our zoning bylaws, it's the building inspector. Yeah.
And whoever's living next door to it.
Yeah. That's true.
Probably the best monitor.
Yeah.
I'll also mention, when we were talking about. These small size. You know, less than 900 square feet, the area that I'm familiar with. Um, is Mackinac Heights. Okay, where all these little cottages are. Most of these little cottages are. Well, less than nine, nine hundred square feet. And they're being short term rented all the time during the summer. Um, and that's how people who own them afford them in many cases.
And also pay their.
And that's not going to stop. You know, there's, there's, this, this, this regulation doesn't touch that.
Cause it's not on their property.
No, it, well, there's one structure on the property. They're, they're not designated as ADUs, so.
Okay, all right, so I am going to, um, and everybody should vote as they are comfortable voting here, okay? But I'm going to make a motion. Um, that we um, say that accessory dwelling units cannot be used as short term rentals and that we give, with that, we give Donna the input so she can. Start working on updating our, our zoning bylaws. So the motion is that accessory dwelling units cannot be used as short term rentals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wayne had a.
Okay, now don't get mad at me.
Any discussion, keep it short.
Do we know, and I think Patrick had this answer last time and I don't remember. Was how many ADUs are in town right now?
We don't.
That we, that we know of. I thought Patrick had a, um, a number associated with that.
I don't think so.
So we don't really know, yeah.
We don't know.
I'd like to know.
Should we know?
How much?
No. I don't know how we would know.
Okay. All right, so I have a second from.
Rerapids are bylaws, shouldn't we know?
I mean, I, okay.
I don't expect many will be built, technically.
So we have no idea how many ADUs there are. We want to make darn sure they don't short term rental. Okay.
All right, so we have a second. Um. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I abstain?
Yes.
I'm, I'm really confused. I, I think the part where it came into families can't move into a smaller dwelling got me. So that they, they aren't able to do that.
Okay, so we've got, you're abstaining, Liz? And we've got three in favor. Carl?
No, I, I just don't have an argument with her.
Okay, Nancy?
Don't we have to go by what the state says anyway, whether we agree with it or?
No, we're giving input to Donna.
Yeah.
So that she can go ahead and start updating. The bylaws. So, you know, she has these questions, two of which we've, we've answered. And then we have this third outstanding question that we just need to, you know, and as far as, this will go to the select board too. So they have a, they'll have a whack at it as well. So, um. We just need to, you know, come to. Have a vote on this and see where we fall so Donna can start, you know, getting to work. Do I have that right, Donna?
Yes, I think the, the question you're, you're asking is whether you want to prohibit these. As of right, ADUs from being used for short term rentals.
Right.
Right. So I've got.
I think in theory, I, I would say I have a plan for not to be used as short term.
Okay, so I've got in favor Gary. Um, Eric and me. Carl, you're opposed. Nancy?
I thought I agreed, but I, I don't know. Um. Well, if there's no way to monitor it, how would we even know? I mean, we could have that bylaw, but what difference does it make if there's no way?
Look at me.
I'll ask, I'll ask town council. Okay, so we're, we say we agree that they should not be used as short term rentals. However, we really have no control over that. How would we even know if they're doing that, you know? What do you do about it when they, we find out if they are doing it as a short term rental? What do we do about it?
We, we've had that discussion and that conundrum since we first started considering. Whether to prohibit uh, short term rentals altogether. Yes, we recognize, you know, this all started before. We even had a, a licensing provision for short term rentals in the general bylaw. We recognized that. That there was nothing in the zoning bylaw that permitted short term rental. Um, and uh, we had, you know, over a hundred short term rentals listed on Airbnb in town. So yes, uh, it is problematic for enforcement. But I do hear us getting too much off of topic of the ADU bylaw. This ADU bylaw is something we should consider separate from the issue of enforcement of short term rentals.
So can we just say we accept that there can be ADUs?
Well, you have to accept that there can be ADUs. Uh, we're back to starting from, we have to allow these statutory ADUs. Their protected use ha- have to be permitted as of right.
So don't we just have to agree with what the state mandates?
We do, we do, but you can do more. You can um. Put further conditions on it such as. Thankfully, you already have in your zoning bylaw that the setbacks for accessory structures should be the same, have to be the same. Setbacks as the, as the principal dwelling. That's great. Not all community, not all towns have that. Um. You know, we had talked about the other. Issues, which is um, some of which you've already determined that you're not going to allow more than one by special permit. You're just going to allow the one as of right. Um, we're not certain, I, we did have a question about. Parking. And of course, you can't require more than one additional off street parking for a protected use ADU. However, you can't require it. A- any additional off street parking if the protected use ADU is within a half mile of a transit station. Which includes a bus stop. And so it seems like there might be at least one or more bus stop for the regional transit authority in town.
One.
But you can also raise your hand, can't you?
I don't know. It's only twice a day though. So you can't go to work on it.
Just raising your hand, I don't think would.
Yeah, I don't think that's. I think just, I think of it sort of from a. How many bus stops? There's one bus stop in town?
Yep.
Yeah, so.
So, you know, you'll, those are the kinds of things we'll have to put in our zoning bylaw to make sure we're consistent, but um.
Right. I would go ahead and, and work on that because that's.
Yeah.
Not negotiable, so I would go ahead and, and get, yeah, incorporate that wording.
So I just want to say, the whole issue of enforcement for the ADUs themselves, I don't think that one's going to be so difficult. Because they do have to go and get a building permit, either to convert the space or to build new space. But you're going to be able to keep track of those. But the issue of the short term rentals, separate and definitely a question of enforcement. But it already, that's a, a. But it already, that's a, a problem for enforcement that already exists.
Do you know what other towns are doing about the ADU being used as short-term rental? Are they allowing it?
You know, so we do represent a number of other towns and they do not, for the most part, permit ADUs, statutory protected-use ADUs, to be used for short-term rentals, you know. Everybody's going through, we'll see what everybody's town meetings do. But the proposal at this time is not to allow them to be used for short-term rentals. Thank you.
But I guess, would you make this, so if we agree that we can't use them for short-term rentals and we do have a family that wants to rent their house, could they come for a special permit to use their ADU? You know, to do it the other way around? So that they could stay in their house and use it as a, as an AD, the, the small one as an ADU? And, or excuse me, as short-term rental?
No.
No?
I wouldn't think so.
Is part of their house being used as a short-term?
Say, you know, okay, if I wanted to rent my house, fine, I could move into an ADU, I'm one person. But say a family wanted to do it and we have a law on the books that says you can't use that little ADU as a short-term rental. They can't leave their, you know, they can't move into that thing. Could they come, come to us for a special permit? Be able to do, to make that switch?
No, because that kind of defeats the purpose of what you're, we're just talking about. I think it's, it's one or the other.
I assume they could make an addition onto their house and, and create a two-family if they had enough.
Yes.
If they had enough property, of course, if you're R4, for instance, you would need five acres to do that. I don't know what the other zones are like, that's just a one I'm familiar with. So it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate that possibility.
Okay, back to your vote. I'm sorry, I, I got off on a tangent.
All right, now's the time to ask, it's, it's fine, Nancy.
I'd rather, I'd.
Questions.
Would rather not have an ADU used as a short-term, because there's so many short-term rentals already.
Right.
Right.
You don't have ADUs.
Yeah, there's no, this, this doesn't create a shortage of short-term rentals.
Right.
You know, not by any means.
It's, it's, I think it's.
Focus on what intent is.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I will repeat the question. I've made a motion and I had a second from Gary. The motion was that ADUs not be used as short-term rentals. All in favor of ADUs not being used as short-term?
Still a road call.
Okay. I'm in favor of ADUs not being used as short-term rentals. Gary?
No.
Eric?
No.
Liz?
No.
Carl?
Yes.
Yes, Nancy?
No.
Wayne?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, you got it, Donna?
Got it.
And Patrick, you will have a whack at this at select board, so, you know.
I want to let them.
I think we've had the vote and I'd like to move on. Next on the agenda, we have continue the discussion of the master plan update. And at the last meeting, we talked about that and it was left.
Kate, I'll take off.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. So it was left that we would, that Michael would look into options and he's been busy. The MS and other things, so I don't have any material from him yet. But I will remind him and.
So we're talking about bringing in someone to consult with us, aren't we?
It would undoubtedly involve a consultant. And, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, you know, when we did the plan in 1996, that involved a consultant from over New York State. When we did the visioning, that was a consultant. And when we did zoning review, we used a consultant for that as well. And then when we looked at, at, what was it called, Open Space Residential? That was, yeah, another consultant, so we've had quite a few consultants.
And what's the process for actually adopting a revised or a new master plan?
So, the process is that we would need to, you know, we, we would want to hire a consultant. And actually, I think the people that did the, I don't know if they're still active, but I thought the people who did the municipal vulnerability preparedness, who here took part in that? Gary, you did, right? Liz, you?
No, I was just at some meeting.
No, okay. Carl?
No, I, yeah.
Nancy, you did, right? No? Okay. I thought they did a good job, but you know, there, I'm sure there are other people out there too. So it would be a question of finding someone to, you know, sort of oversee and coordinate that. And, yeah.
You wouldn't want to have the Berkshire Regional.
That's what I'm just going to say, because Brett, Brett Roberts came in and spoke to us last week. And they do do it and they could, they, you should talk to Lee and there are a couple of other towns that they've just done it for.
Yeah, no, we can, we can, I'd like to consider all options.
I'd like them on the list.
Yeah, sure, got it. So, you know, master plans have to be adopted by the planning board. So, you know, it's, you do a plan and then it has to be, just like with the housing production plan, it has to be accepted and, and voted on and approved.
But it doesn't go to a town meeting, no?
I don't think so, I think it has to be, yeah, I think it's the planning board, yeah.
What are we trying to change about the master plan?
We can look at it, yeah.
Well, it's, you know, master plans are something that is, they're tied to funding, like federal funds, what's left of them. And state, state funds. There are some, I talked to Michael about this, he's not going to go through and look at every single state and federal grant, but you know, it's, grants work in different ways, there's a checklist and some are, it's part of the consideration as to whether you have a current master plan, meaning it's not older than, it's five years, not older than five years. So it, it can factor in. And it sounds like at the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust Committee, there is a, a federal grant where, that would come into place, for example, for the Glendale Middle Road project, where I think there was a consultant that the board talked to, Liz, you can spell me on this one. And she indicated, what was her name from, and which agency in, in Pittsfield?
Was it Eileen?
Yes.
Eileen Peltier.
Yeah, and what was her?
Changed it to Hearth something, Hearth, what's it Hearth something? It used to be Berkshire.
Hearthway.
Thank you, Hearthway.
Okay, so she has a, a nonprofit and they're developers, I guess, of affordable housing. And for a particular grant that she was, that was discussed, a current master plan would be required. So basically, you know, you got to spend some taxpayer, it's a bit of a thing, you know, you got to spend taxpayer dollars to do your master plan in order to qualify for taxpayer dollars for some of these, these federal and state grants.
Are there things specifically in ours now that we have issue with?
It's, I think this, the issue right now is that because the master plan is not considered current, this, in this example that I'm mentioning, this federal grant, we would not qualify for that federal grant because we don't have a current.
I hear that part of your explanation, but I'm wondering, in, within our master plan, are there things we're looking to change about it or are we looking just to have the updated plan? And say, okay, now we're ready, we're, we're in.
I would say some people would say that it's outdated. Some of us would say that it's, if it isn't broke, why do you want to fix it?
But I think.
But I think it wouldn't hurt to take a, at least, I would say, take a, now, I don't want to say cursory glance, but certainly just look and see quickly whether it's, you know, is it something that just can be reviewed and just updated? Or is it something that's got to be dismantled and rebuilt, you know?
I don't want to make more work for us, but consultants are no, I mean, I feel like we should just sit down, read through the document as a group. I mean, it's not that long. And, and, and I, and, 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 and then take note of, 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 of issues up for discussion and whether that means breaking out to committees or.
Well, that's what we were supposed to do at a previous meeting.
Right.
So, but we can do it again.
I know.
So, I mean, if the board feels that, you know, we haven't done a sufficient, a sufficient job at doing that, I can put it down on the next agenda.
Well, I'd like to, I would like, before we hire anybody, to know what it is, we're, I do not want to open a can of worms and start from scratch.
Right. I don't think we would be starting from scratch.
Wayne, I think, my guess is that we will be starting from scratch, but why don't we do this?
Why can't we just update the figures that are in here?
Yeah, I mean, they're talking about 1995, 96, you know.
Average traffic.
Why don't we do this?
In 1992.
Tax assessments.
You-hoo. How about this?
Talking about it.
I will, I will, I will talk to Michael and we will look into the idea of updating the current plan and how feasible is that? And in the meantime, does the board want me to put this on the agenda for the next meeting with the idea that everybody is going to go through that master plan? It's posted on the website, I'm losing my voice, with a fine-tooth comb. And we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Does the board want that?
Sure, that's how, that'll get done.
Our next meeting.
Sure.
When is our next?
Okay, Wayne, are you okay with that?
Just looking at the.
You're our, you're our master plan skeptic.
I don't want to get into another hiring of two consultants where we spend 18 months discussing, round and round and round we go. I, I will not do that.
Okay, so.
The next meeting's the fourth?
Yes.
Okay. I can do that, yeah, I would, I would like to review that before we do any hiring of consultants and find out what we really think we need to do.
Okay, so I'm going to ask.
My work is to go read through this thing again.
Yes, you can ask.
And, and make notes.
Right.
Are we going to read through it at the meeting?
No.
Just, no, just read through it and summarize, read through it and summarize your comments.
Okay.
Okay? And if you want, you can ask Michael to, or Jennifer, would you print it out for people who want to copy? Can you do that?
Master plan?
Yeah, the old one, yeah, so Jennifer can print them out for you if you'd like.
Yeah, but nobody wants all that.
I mean, I'll just say that, you know, that really the key of these master plans is the survey. And surveys are an art. And quite a few of them that I've seen recently are, are pretty badly written. You know, they've got these leading questions going to the, the answers that they want. So something that I will be very focused on is the quality of the survey. I think at a recent meeting, somebody, might have been Peter, got up and pointed this out with the housing production plan survey. Was it you, Peter? I think it was. Yeah, so, you know, that's something I'll be looking at, but look through the document and I'll see. Jennifer, do you know, do we have a copy of that old survey? From the first?
I think it's on the web.
The survey's on there too?
The survey.
Yeah, the survey.
From 19.
1996. From the, the old plan, from the first.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to get those questions.
I'll see if.
If that was done well, let's go with that.
Yeah, I'll see if I can locate that. All right, so I know that, you know, we have a lot going on and we'll just keep, you know, moving forward incrementally. And thank you for all your discussion and comments, I appreciate it. Wayne, I know you're probably not happy.
Don't assume that, I'm, I'm part of the conversation, I mean, whether it goes my way or not. There's seven of us here.
Yeah.
But I don't, or I, I, I will say though, I think if somebody has something to say in the audience, I think we should let them speak. I, I don't agree with, let's move on. If there's somebody that wants to speak, I think we let them speak. I'm, I'm sorry, but I think it's important, it's not just us, and when we have an audience, I think we need to do that, I do.
Thank you for your input. Okay, so with that, do we have any?
Wasn't there a land issue that we had to talk about? That someone was going, going to buy land?
Oh, that's, oh, thank you for bringing that up. I'll bring that up under, under, you know, agenda items for the next meeting, but please hold that, hold that thought, Nancy. And Patrick, you have your hand up, did you want to make a comment?
Uh, yeah, I just, I have a question for the board. Thursday's select board is the, is the budget meeting. And, and your board has requested that we add a, 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 a payment to board members.
I didn't, I took that, I took that off the agenda for today, so.
Hey, I'm going to ask my question, Kate, if that's all right. And I would really appreciate it if you could stop interrupting me when I'm talking. It's so rude and I'm so tired of dealing with you on it. The question I have is this, if we add a stipend for you guys in the, in the, in the Parks and Rec Department, then it creates a, a buy right that you, that anyone on those two elected boards can get health insurance. And it results in a 3% or 4% increase in the town budget in terms of what the potential is. And I would like to just make sure that it's the position of your board that you guys are looking for a stipend because it's not the amount of the stipend that impacts the budget, it is the impact on our health insurance and OPAP costs, which go through the roof. So I'd really like to get feedback before Thursday, so I can formulate a position. Thank you.
So that's, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, so my comment is this is not on the agenda. And I don't feel that we should, we should be discussing it because it's not on the agenda and that would be an open meeting law issue. So, you know, we can put it on the next agenda, I realize your meeting is Thursday. But I think we should, you know, be careful here and, and not have a discussion of this right now. So with that, next meeting, agenda items. Nancy, to your point, Bob Blay, Michael Blay, is looking into that and gathering information. We have a certain amount of time. And so I'm watching that, okay?
I thought it was the end of March, that's why I was concerned if our next.
It's either 90, it's either 90 or 120 days, I can't remember which, but. Touch, oh, wait, with, with Michael, okay? So, yeah, thank you for the, thank you for the reminder, by the way. Okay, so do you want me to put down discussion of a stipend for the next meeting? It's up to you guys.
I thought the stipend was not for us, but for.
Uh, and you know what I had in mind was supplies, that type of thing, you know, covering our printer ink, that type of thing.
I think maybe it's just a change in, in verbiage and we're probably out of it.
Yeah, so I don't.
I don't want anything.
I don't want it.
No, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll just scratch that one. Okay, so with that, Carl?
I'm not asking us to discuss this or decide anything, but I'm just saying that I don't know when it was decided that we meet at 6:30, but as far as I'm concerned, earlier would be, that, earlier would be better. I don't know how that sits with everyone else, but you know, it's something worth thinking about.
That's, that's an administrative thing, we can talk about that right now if you want.
Whatever you like.
Yeah, so.
I have enough trouble getting here at 6:30. My only thing would, assuming for Wayne, I'm going to be here for any length of time. Summers are tough for me.
Yeah.
That's all.
No matter what time it is. You mean to be earlier?
Well, early, you would think you'd be, yeah, it's later, right?
Well, 6:30 works, but if it's six for everybody and six makes sense for everybody else, I'll do my best to get here.
I'm fine with six, but Gary, is that?
No promises.
Fine. Would six help you, Carl?
It's a little bit less dinner time.
No, I hear you.
I guess dinner time.
I don't know, I mean, I, I, I don't have a strong feeling about it, it's just like, you know, it crosses my mind.
I mean, the one thing is that for people who want to attend, 6:30 might, you know, they could get, it might be better, yeah.
All right, well.
Then they put their dinner in.
Yeah.
I just.
How do you feel about that? How do you feel about that?
I think we're all in the early bird special.
Well, we can, we can think about it some more, but for now, we okay with 6:30? Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making one.
Hi, second? All in favor?
Aye.